Evening. Thank you for joining us for the Selectmen's meeting of August 3rd, 2020. Please join me in slinging the flag. For the leaders through the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand, for one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first scheduled appointment is Paul Zanale, regarding recreation director duties.
Sure. I'll start. So it's good for next year. Um, my stay here as road agent is short-lived. I'd like to see the town take now semi-retired and make the recreation director's job more inclusive. Uh, take care, tie some of the loose ends up. Take care of some of the things like, uh, instead of just running the summer rec program, be the town's liaison for all the different, uh, sporting groups that use our fields. Um, and if there's a problem, to be that person to make the phone calls. I can tell you, there's a this weekend, they seem to have cleaned their act up after Paul made a few phone calls and basically informed them that there was no drinking of beer on town property and no leaving trash all over the place and, uh, things like that. So, um, there's things like, uh, the, um, the playground equipment at Como Field has reached the end of its life. I don't necessarily think that's the road agent's job to be deciding which play apparatus we bring in for the kids. I think that should be the recreation director. Um, what else we got? Um, make sure all your teams have the applications filled out. They have their, uh, liability paperwork filled out. Some of this stuff Susan's doing. Um, obviously, the board of selectmen will still make all the final approvals for who uses your facilities because that's, that's what you do. But, uh, have Paul be the point person, or maybe Paul's not the guy. Maybe you want to hire someone else, but, um, I think that's the way this town should be going. Um, he's already looking at, uh, some adult recreation projects like the pickleball program for later on this summer. Um, if that takes off, all those kinds of things can be done. You've got, uh, your senior trips that basically flush through the recreation department's budget. Probably the recreation director should have a little bit of involvement with that. Um, senior lunches. Maybe you want Paul to be involved in that, or the rec director. Because again, some of that, some of those funds basically go through the rec department budget. Um, we've got a list of things here. I want to know if the board of selectmen would like us to continue with this project, come back to you with probably a job description, which you folks can obviously go through and say yay or nay, or disagreed not, you know, I don't want the director to do that, but, um, I think Paul can speak to, um, the rec director position in other towns of our size. I'm going to hand the mic to him, but this is, I just want to let folks know, this is my idea. This is not trying to build a job for himself. It's me trying to shut some jobs away from the road agent's position. And also, you know, Susan's got a hand in it. There's a bunch of hands in it, but no one is in charge of the whole, no one's watching over the whole thing. Um, I'm sure Susan, you wouldn't mind if someone took some of that away from you.
Yeah. Team things that didn't make last.
Yep.
That's my recommendation. I kind of, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but sometime it's budget time. So if this is going to happen, you need to start thinking about it within the next three or four weeks. Um, if you folks want to move forward with that, you need to let me know or Paul know, or you want to take the project on yourself. That's, that's, that's fine with me. I'm not trying to make it more work for myself. Um, but it's my recommendation, and I think Paul wants to talk about the other towns and what they have.
So I surveyed, um, towns that are similar size to us, and they all have at least one direct full-time director, you know, twelve months a year. I look at Brentwood because they're obviously right next to us. They're similar size. They have a director. They have that nice building there. Um, they do a lot more in terms of trips and activities and things like that. Um, some of the other things that we were thinking are that trying to target some of the adults. I think we do a good job with the kids with different activities in the summer program, but not so much. And the seniors have the lunches and the activities, but kind of that middle group. So that's the reason for the pickleball, maybe a trip to Foxwoods, maybe a trip to see a show down in Boston, obviously, once this pandemic is done. Um, but just trying to get, our, our committee has tried to be, tried to make this rec center a place that people know where it is and, um, and come and do things. And, you know, we've been slowly improving it with Rich's help. Um, but my goal is that it's not, the rec center's not near Bolton. Bolton's is near the rec center. So that's my, that's my little tagline. But so other, other towns have, you know, a bigger budget, have, we have the revolving fund obviously now, but I talked to, uh, it was Nottingham, and they had made enough money with their revolving fund to buy the, buy a playground with the profits they'd made. And they're exceptional for sure, but it would be nice to, to build up some of that stuff and make some money and be able to, uh, fix things and improve things through that budget. So, but I'm up to it. I did, took early retirement from Sanborn. I'm going to be doing some consulting, but I have time. Um, if you, if I'm the one you want doing it. And this is kind of what I was looking towards as I took the job, whatever it was, six years ago. That was my thought process is it would be a nice part-time, uh, job for my retirement. I don't expect it to go full-time. So I said full-time. I don't expect it to go from what I'm doing now to full-time, but I'd like to slowly increase it. And, and I think coordinating that the communication Susan's awesome, but it's easy to get things mixed up with who, you know, who checked with this person, who got this. If we all just, if it was all centralized, I think that would be helpful.
Uh, Paul, right now you're, you received a stipend, right? And how much is that stipend?
Eight thousand.
And that's to just kind of coordinate what's on the first sheet here, the tree lighting and that stuff.
Right.
Um, and then if the summer camp was open, you get hourly pay for that. Can I ask you, how much do you typically make on that rough, like how many, you know?
I get twenty dollars an hour, and there's three hundred and twenty.
Is that, but is that how many hours a week type?
Forty hours a week, times eight, so three hundred and twenty times twenty. That's sixty-five, sixty-six hundred?
Four hundred bucks. Fifty-three, twenty a week or eight weeks?
Yes.
Twenty-four hundred dollars.
Yeah. So for the stuff you do right now, theoretically, you roughly get, um, ten thousand dollars, is that's it?
Okay, yep.
And then in the summertime, your full-time, the rest of it is kind of the same. Do you, how many hours would you see if you took on these responsibilities? What would you think? Could you do it in, say, thirty-two hours a week or something?
I think you're putting me on the spot.
That's a negative way to approach it.
I, I guess, yeah. I'm not trying to be negative.
But, you know, we, as, we should ask that they come back and give us a job description and figure out X amount of hours per week at a rate of pay. We may decide as a board we want to approve up to twenty hours extra or fifty hours extra within the, I mean, it depends. So you need to see a package put together before.
Well, this, I, I apologize. We're just trying to get, we're getting a bargain for the ten thousand is paid because he's doing a lot of work.
Question about that.
So I want to see, you know, what you envision it had, you know? You said you don't see it full-time. And to be honest, I don't see it full-time. I'm trying to get a guy, how many hours? Just a good idea. We're coming into budget season.
No, I, I, I take no offense. I think it's a good question. It, it varies. I mean, in, you know, starting in January, even December, I started planning for the camp. So I'm getting stuff ready with our online, um, making sure that's all set, online registration, starting to look for counselors because you've got to grab them early, um, things like that. So it varies. I mean, I would say the spring is much busier than, say, the fall. We do have two or three events that we do in the fall as well that have been growing in numbers and growing in, in successful, in success rate, I think. So it varies. I mean, definitely, you know, I, I could figure out what that might come up with and if you have it. Is there a job description? Now I should notice the guest, but I think there's one somewhere, but, yeah. But I think it's changed since the last time I looked at it, would be my guess.
I just would like to say, I mean, right now, we're seeing everything that, as we peel back the onion of Rich Zanale, he's called a road agent. And there's so much more when he coordinates the fields and everything else. You know, so we're seeing all the function that he takes on that without any credit. And the same thing to you. You put on a spectacular family day the other day. You're looking for the movie night, you know, you're, you're tireless. And I think you give a great value. But we've got to figure out a way to do it that's affordable, but that you're compensated to.
Great, okay. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments? What are we doing reviews Wednesday?
Wednesday.
It's probably too short a suspense.
Let's leave them in two weeks with them.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, since we're going to be meeting with them anyway for reviews, that would be an ideal time, but not as two days' weeks. Um, more firm-up job description and kind of what you're proposing.
I would accept that's the movie night. So.
And?
That's why. That's the only problem.
Or could you do it in four weeks? I mean, there's really nothing we're going to be able to do anyway, per se, right?
Well, I, I think if you give us an idea of how many more hours we're talking about in general, whether we offer, because as we prepare for budget season, we may want, I, I haven't talked to any of my colleagues yet, but it might not be a bad idea to work with some of our department heads to put together some of these guidelines, you know, and I give Rich Zanale credit for playing that seat in my head, that we should reach out a little bit more to some of our department heads and say where we want to go next year, set parameters, increases, that kind of stuff. And this will kind of follow through. The town has tried for at least twenty-five years to get a full-time director, at least twenty-five years. And it's been shot down three times for my knowledge for full-time. So I think somewhere in between, I think it's still good. And I'd love this, I'd love to see us expand the services. And I think we've done a terrific job of limited resources to do as much as you provide for our residents at this time to expand.
Yeah. And, you know, a lot of the activities that are listed here would be revenue neutral because it's, we're doing the revolving fund now, so it wouldn't add to it. So if it did a pickleball clinic, it would, they're going to pay X amount of money for a clinic, and it's just going to be a wash and be, you know, but it'd be providing, uh, opportunities for people to do things.
And I think if you start expanding in more adult activities, you're going to get more support from the public.
That's correct. And, and you'll get more revenue. I mean, a lot of these, it's not just a break even, but you will get somebody out of town to do it. They make the money on a bus trip, so.
Right, exactly. That's what I was saying. That town made enough to buy their playground thirty-five thousand dollars and brand new Wapiti Tapias without touching the town budget at all. So that, that's the, that's the goal. That's not next year or the year after, but that's, and my committee's awesome. They, you know, we, we sort of go by that. We want to do an activity, we want to make sure, we're as sure as we can that it's going to go well. And the activities we've started have all increased as we've gone along, so.
Well, I'm pretty sure in two weeks, Paul has something in mind that you and I go over and please present it to the board. I'll probably be here. If you have any questions I can't answer, obviously, we'll bring, I'll bring the questions back to Paul and start with the full, that's what your wishes.
I mean, I might feel a bit confident if I'm first, but it's seven, and it's fairly quick because the movie's not until eight-thirty. And we're not going to start letting people in until seven-thirty.
Yeah. I mean, we can put you first on the agenda. I guess, just to reiterate, um, I think there's many things that you can highlight that would be self-funding or potential moneymakers, you know, would be good, just for everybody's knowledge. And I, I think that is good for the public to know that this is not a, it's not a tax drain.
Yeah, the people that are getting the benefit are paying.
Yeah, paying to play.
Which is key, I think.
If you want to get together before they just come in.
Okay, great.
Um, you want to talk about the donation thing, Mike?
Yeah, please.
You want me to do it?
Yes.
Uh, Paul got a request from, uh, some people running for state rep who want to make a donation sponsorship. There's four of them. They want to put fifty dollars each for two hundred dollars.
That's for the movie night?
For the movie night. And the question was whether or not we want political donations like that, whether that causes a conflict or anything. And also, he said that the, uh, Ms. Kingston Scholarship Program would like to help out with a fifty-dollar scholarship.
Are they donating as individuals or are they not donating as?
That's a good question. Either donating as individual or as a state rep so-and-so.
How was it meaning that donation?
It sounded like, it sounded like the state reps.
And so they would have the public to thank them for their donations to that event. I'm not going to hear that.
You know what?
Say no. I'm not comfortable with political donations. It, it, you're donating, I mean, it's going to sound terrible no matter what I say. I think it's recognized if they want to do it, but it also seems self-serving. I mean, I don't know that we would.
It's like high-three advertisement.
I, I would recommend that we find out if they're donating as an individual or as a.
It says that there are four reps running for it. They want to donate, so I'm sure they're doing it as a rep.
I think we should clarify whether we can even do that in the first place.
Can they do that? Can they legally do that?
I think.
And, and claim it as a campaign exhibit? I think it's messy, I guess. I think it's messy.
If they donate it as an individual, would that be different?
If it was an individual without saying their name, I think that would be different. But.
Very good if you're saying their name, but not going into the capacity of.
We are going to put up, we're making a slideshow that's going to come, that's going to start before the movie, and it's going to say thanking our sponsors and all the, all the businesses and people that have donated. So that will be.
I kind of agree with Elliot. If it's an individual name, that's one thing. If it says candidate, so-and-so.
First state rep.
Yeah.
And then you get into, if someone's going to, if it's not, if it's a safe word and the other party may complain, I think it gets messy. I really do.
It does feel like perhaps the town is endorsing.
Right. And I, I will vote no no matter what. I guess it's really, because I just, I, I think we're promoting individual candidates. And I just, I don't see us doing that.
I think we want to find out for sure if they're doing it as an individual or as the position.
I can find out.
I think in today's highly charged political environment, it would be nice to allow people to recreate without politics thrown in their face.
Thank you.
So if it's an individual?
Maybe.
They can make a donation if they truly want. They can make it as an anonymous donation to, I mean, call it a day if they really do. I don't understand if Ms. Kingston won, but.
Okay. So anonymous, not their name without, not saying state rep.
I, I don't want to be in front of the event saying thank you to these sponsors. Don't want that. If they want to do it out of the goodness of their heart, that's good.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
I don't know. But I'm the only one present there for, for other colleagues here.
I would say they could donate it as an individual, but not in the position of.
But just say their name. I would say state rep or candidate for state rep.
And I would agree with that statement as well. As long as it's their name, just a private donation, that's okay to mention their name. They're no different than anyone else. Keep the political office out of it.
And one thing for Rich, uh, did you talk to FEMA about the UV lights? So.
So before, before we get off on this subject, let's get this one clear.
Yeah. So is that all you need to pull?
I think so. So just so I'm clear, it'll, it'll come as an individual on the slideshow that starts. It'll say from Phil Coombs, boom, now, running for state rep for.
Well, now that you've put me on the spot.
I don't know. You're just, you're just, we're there.
I still vote no. But you have three that say yes, right?
Do we need to vote on it?
Do a straw poll, right?
You got a straw poll. I think it's pretty clear that you have three selectmen that are in favor for sure. I don't know about Rich, but I definitely know.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that they can accept private donations from private individuals not politically affiliated to, for the movie night, or any donations for the recreation for that matter.
Okay.
Or anyone?
For any, anytime anyone wants to donate to the recreation.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Further discussions.
Who was the second?
Rich. Gone. One each. Further discussion. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alessio?
No.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Yes.
That a you have for us, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll try to come, depending on how things are going on at seventeen.
If you can just get us a copy of the, the description you come up with whenever you get it finished, if you can just email it out or send it to Susan and she can distribute it to us. That way everybody can look at it. And then hopefully, we, any questions we have, we can do before the meeting.
Okay.
We can email. Any follow-up questions? And then if you can make it here on, at our next meeting for seven o'clock, then.
I think so. Hopefully it fog goes well.
Yeah, but if not, Rich will be here. I mean, everybody will have their chance to address any major issues beforehand.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Now, now we can ask you a question.
Well, I, I think we have an answer for that already. Susan got mine.
Oh, yeah?
Whether that was covered or not?
Yeah. So what I got from our local liaison, Paul Latch, is it's not clear. The town's going to have to go ahead and get out there, uh, put their money out there to apply and see if whoever is going to be overseeing the program is going to say yay or nay. Um, Paul was going to take it one step further in light of his chain. I didn't get hold of Paul until last Monday because he had, uh, some time off. So last Monday is when I spoke with him a week ago. And that's where we left it. He was rounding up his chain of command to see if he can get any, you know, oh, yeah, take it out of this fund. Oh, yeah, take it out of this fund. Interested to find out what else we found out because.
So just for everybody else's knowledge, this is for the UV lights that will kill bacteria and everything else going through the air handling systems of the town offices. Um, Susan contacted the Gofer people who are the ones who reimburse us. And basically, they said we cannot pre-approve expenditures, but this, if this is a public safety measure undertaken in response to COVID-19, we can reimburse.
Yeah, I listened. Yeah.
They did feel as though.
So the answer is yes, we can, right? We just apply for it. But we have to spend it first.
Yep. We have to spend it, apply for it, and if they say yes.
But we do kind of have it, right? We kind of have it, right?
Yes, we do.
Um, so Rich has got paving bids.
So the top page of my worksheet, basically took the bids and tried to compare apples to apples. The best bank that bought is Pike Industries for a total of three forty-nine, two fifty for the, uh, basically it took five thousand tons of mix. If you look at the bids, there's a little discrepancy one way or the other. So it took a constant number, based it on, and base the total off of what they went and charged per ton. So that's the big number on all three bids. Brock's actually was the low bidder for just the actual pavement. Their number per ton was sixty-five, fifty-five. Pike Industries was sixty-seven, eighty-five, and Bell and Flynn was seventy-one dollars a ton. There's a section in Little River that needs to be reconstructed. Brock's was high because they don't own their own equipment. At twenty-four, seven ninety-six, ninety. Pike Industries gave me a number of ten thousand dollars to grind and, and grind, shape them back and get ready for paving. And Bell and Flynn's number was sixty-nine hundred. So Bell and Flynn was low on the grinding, high on the paving. They still ended up being third place for the total. Uh, one other discrepancy is Brock's didn't include the tack coat when we're putting, um, the new paving on the old. I used a constant of three thousand dollars based on what the other ones bid. So that actually increases by three thousand dollars, but it still, it didn't impact winning or losing one or the other. Pike is clearly a low, low number, three forty-nine, two fifty. My recommendation is that you award a bid tonight to Pike Industries.
Question on Rose, we told the people on the circuit, Bass leaning all over, they were going to get paved this year.
It's not going to happen. No, we don't look at it. We're not going to do it.
I don't think we promised them that.
No, we told them. We told them you needed a year. Spend a year getting them ready to pave it this year.
We're still waiting for bucket truck to cut all those trees, Rich. There's an awful lot of trees we need to cut.
What about the legal aspect of that? Has that been resolved as far as the trees that were in the way on those areas?
Well, that's the other thing. You've got to get your town council to come up with a easement so that I can, um, go ahead and cut those trees. So the people that bought the road gave me permission and satisfied your town council. That hasn't been finalized yet. And nothing. So I'm not going in there cutting and flashing about, uh, some liability being released from the town or myself.
So did you say your recommendations with Pike Industries?
Yeah, it's a little number.
So Rich, you know, during this project, you need the board of selectmen to contact town council?
I started the process last year and I didn't get it anywhere. Actually, Susan made the phone calls. We need form paperwork. Question was, do we even have a right to rebuild Sines and Circuit? You know, do we actually, is it ever actually been a legal? I'd have to go back and look at some of our side doors, but, you know, was it ever accepted comfortably by the town council?
San Jose?
On Circuit, sure. On Circuit, Bass, in the end. All of them on Circuit, Bass. The ones down, I'd love to pave it. Be a headache for the next guy to not have to deal with it continually. But we're in a different world than we were in twenty years ago with funds, liability, and dealing with boats. The other thing is you don't have a hundred percent of the people that want that road fixed. So then you've got to make the decision, either take the, take it, spend money fighting for it. You know, fight on the before or after.
Can you give me one, one fact that is a pose?
It is a pose.
Okay, well, uh, we've got three bids. Rich has given his recommendation. I would be recusing myself from this. So I will turn this over to the vice chair.
I have a question. So I'm, I'm looking at the package you gave us, Rich.
Yep.
So Pike Industries has got like two lines. So Pike Industries has got like two lines on their bid. Did they give us any more information than that? And I'm looking at the proposal for Bell and Flynn, and they have a very laid-out document here as to what they're gonna do, how much so and so forth. And then again, I look at Brock's Industries, and likewise, they've done the same thing. So I don't, and we're asking to award it to Pike, right?
Yep.
I really, I don't know that that's enough.
If you want my personal opinion, my personal want, is the high bid of Bell and Flynn.
I'm sorry?
Bell and Flynn's, who I would recommend then do the work. It's $12,000 more money. I like Bell and Flynn's work, always have, but they're a lot more money.
Does Pike include fixing the soft shoulder after they paved it to level it off with dirt?
Shoulder level?
Yeah.
None of these include that.
No, none of them include that?
Okay.
I find it hard to make a decision based upon, if you look at Pike, there's nothing there. I'd make a motion, we take this under advisement and try to get some more information on it. There's not enough information for Pike for us to make a clear decision.
I just heard Rich say if he had his brothers, he'd go to Bell and Flynn, even if they're 4% more. And did I hear that correctly, Rich?
Yep.
So you're only recommending Pike because...
It's a low number.
Like $12,000 on a $40,000 dollar project, it's 4% of the projects.
I think we ought to at least offer Pike the opportunity, seeing that it's a low bidder, to provide us more information to make an informed decision. I mean, they're bidding $358,138.35, and I'm only seeing a couple of lines on this bid, as to, it's not as comprehensive.
Well, everyone else, Bell and Flynn and Brock gave a comprehensive, but can I ask you, Rich, why would it include this? Like, I thought every time we paved, we always include them finishing the shoulder.
No, it's always a second, you know?
Say it again, and it's a second?
Yep.
Okay.
We talked about, when we talked about paving, either not doing it or cutting back, or we giving that up. And we talk about the money crunch, possibly saving money.
So this is money that we're awarded from the state, correct?
We went through this about 12 or 15 weeks ago, and I was looking for some guidance from the board of selectmen, but I've yet to get it. I offered a proposal, about $70,000, which was not quite 10%. Looking for what the board wanted. These numbers can change. If you only want to spend, so let's say this is $350,000, no matter which one you do. You only want to spend $300,000, and I cut one of the roads out. This is a price per ton.
I understand.
So if we put this in, this is based on 5,000, if we find that revenues are okay, we can spend the money, we might want to put 6,000 on it down. But I need a decision to make, that's for us. We can wait two more weeks, but beyond that, we might as well shut it down. But you guys gotta decide what's going on here with the financial situation in town and get back to the problems. I've been waiting, we should have been up to bid a month ago, at least. I'm surprised the numbers are as low as they are. That tells me that they don't have enough work to get them through the season, which normally, by the 1st of August, they've already scheduled out through beyond Thanksgiving. That's not, I can tell you that's not the case. So we got a pretty decent, even being this late in the season, putting up a bid, a pretty decent number. I haven't seen numbers in the 60s, and I'm gonna guess 10 years per ton.
I think, for the sake of vice chair, I agree. Like, Pike doesn't have any information. So, you know, the devil's in the details. If one of us has it, I would make a motion to table this for two weeks to get the information, and hopefully we can make a recommendation the next quarter, maybe.
And Rich, to be honest too, I would feel better. I know you were recommending even a higher bid for the contract because they do better quality work and they're more comfortable with what they're gonna try. And so if that's Bell and Flynn, even if you get more information from Pike, and you still feel that the right thing to do is Bell and Flynn, I'd rather go with Bell and Flynn and have the job done right, and not be chasing someone to fix or reimburse or whatever.
I agree. I need to caution you right now. You start playing these games where, oh, I'm not gonna bid Kingston because that's a Bell and Flynn town, and then you won't have anyone bidding jobs. So...
I'm just reacting to the discussion here.
Okay, and no offense to Rich, but he has his favorites that he likes to use. But at the end of the day, it's $12,000, and if we're talking about dollars and cents here, it doesn't matter who Rich likes. They're still gonna do an adequate job to the specification, right?
And you could go to Bell and Flynn, say, hey, can they cut you $12,000 more?
And now you're going against... Use them. I'm disappointed they came in highest, and I wonder if now it's like they say, oh, we got them. And I have a hard time doing Bell and Flynn. I would go with Brock's if anything.
My theory on that, in heating and air conditioning, we're all, is the high bid. Probably made people a lot more than the other people were, and that's probably what Bell and Flynn's doing.
The one thing I agree with all of you on is the face of Pike is not as detailed as the other. That I agree we could go with, two weeks of that alone.
So my, my only problem is, if you read the bottom line, the above-priced specifications and conditions are satisfactory and hereby accepted. What does it say? It says nothing. So if we're going to sign this, you've got two lines. It doesn't tell what the specifications are or the condition.
Your point is well taken.
Yeah, so...
I disagree with you.
No, no, I mean, so it's $358,000, and we're gonna sign something to say, where are we signing?
My point is that the lowest bidder isn't always the right bidder.
And I agree with that.
That's all I'm really saying.
But I'm just saying, if we're gonna do apples to apples, we gotta see what they're bidding.
All right, that's fair.
I agree with you.
I made a motion, and if it wasn't sent, I'll second that.
So it's tabled to the 17th.
The information for... Probably take a vote.
Yes.
Ball, vote, please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Can I take that over now?
Yep.
All yours. As far as the spending the money, I think the assessment we're holding off on doing raises or anything like that, we're waiting to see what the state is gonna be as far as revenues taken in via taxes. I don't think we've gotten the final number, but I think before we make the decision in two weeks, we can get those numbers to see. But everything was trending in the appropriate direction. It was along the lines of what it is in a typical year. So I think, you know, given that there's state money involved in this, and these roads need to be done, I don't think we should be bothering with it. I'm fully open to having a discussion on that now, if everybody feels otherwise.
I think, I agree with you. I mean, we're better shaking than that we're gonna be.
Just round numbers, it's about $188,000, $185,000 block grant money. The budget itself has right around that same number for road paving. Then there's another $80,000 line for building, which usually rolled into paving. So there's $440,000, so this is $350,000. So there's $90,000 that I didn't even put up the bid. If you guys decide, we can go ahead and spend our budget. And yes, and if you remember, you know, whenever this COVID thing started, I identified about $80,000 in winter maintenance between snow plowing and that's available, that basically served us money. On a good year, I'd be asking you folks to turn that into summer maintenance. And, you know, I'm not doing that. But obviously, when you do your review of the budget, let us know what's going on, what you expect out of the problems. I might ask you to increase this number, you know, more times, more roads. Doesn't matter to me.
I also think when we were having that discussion, we didn't, we were not aware of what kind of reimbursement we would be getting from the state or the feds or anything like that. And, you know, I would say that it's been more than satisfactory, the support we've been getting from those entities. So it's not like we've had to reach into our own pocket to go by PPE and other things. I mean, what we have, we've been reimbursed.
It's been quite a few years, I believe, that we've seen numbers as low to pay to , I'll just tell you that. I don't know if it's gonna be the same thing next year. Who knows what's gonna happen next year, where we'll be. But...
Yeah, I was surprised.
Oil prices were way down, and you probably all followed what they needed for the season. Now they're back there.
I don't think they have oil work on the street. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
See you Wednesday. See you Wednesday.
Just for Rich's sake, he brought up the bike truck. I was just informed by the town clerk, that the title was sent on July 3rd, which was processed. So it's in the mail.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the fire station building committee, a fire suppression update and purchase order approval.
Good evening. Before we jump into the fire protection engineering. Thought I would give a little bit of an update. Been a while since we've come to the issue. The design, probably at a little bit slower pace than we would like, but it is. We did a little reality check in June.
Yeah.
In the middle of June, we had a meeting with the whole team, including SMP and Bowin, and pretty much at that meeting decided that we're not gonna be able to... SMP needs till about September to get all of their documents ready. Then Bowin needs about a month to get things organized, to be able to get the bids out. So that, to the winter, we don't want to have to deal with snow removal and heating and all that sort of thing. So it's best to wait till spring, but we'll be ready to go. We're still keeping the pedal to the metal, otherwise. The poll work is progressing, and the most important thing, I think, that's happened recently, is the bond was sold in the middle of July for 1.67%, which is a phenomenal rate. significantly less, and we'll be able to update that once we get some of the final figures. So other than that, I think the proposal for the fire protection engineering is one of the last pieces we need to get in place for the design work to be completed. I'll turn it over to Ken.
So that was, that was a component that was not in the architect's contract of fire suppression, because we had the multi-building fire cistern, that fire suppression was kinda on us to get that done. So we have three quotes, the chief has the, all the quotes. So we got a quote back from Comprehensive Fire Protection, SFC, and FA, Fernandez Associates out of Byfield, Mass. So not really that easy, getting fire protection quotes in New Hampshire, because there's probably five guys that do it. So we did have to go kinda south. We met, so the architect and myself met with Fernandez on a conference call. He was very open, very forthcoming with information as far as what we need on the multi-building. He solved some problems for us on the call, which made some design changes. What you'll see on the backside of the building now is a little bump out. So we're gonna have to have the cistern right up against the foundation wall, but we need to have a vertical pump. You can't have a horizontal pump on this size system and still, you know, get water to the church or get water to the town hall. So we had to be above with the vertical. So there's gonna be a little bump out, and that was his suggestion to the architect. So they liked that. All of a sudden, the next couple of days, we get the change on the site plan back. So he was very helpful as far as how we would solve this problem. The quotes came in, Comprehensive was $11,580. One of the changes midstream, we kept going back and forth on, we need to hire someone in the town, we'll need to hire fire protection to do the multi-building, fire suppression system. And then SMP would hire another fire protection agency to do the fire station itself, so the risers, the sprinklers. That came kinda crashing together. It didn't make any sense for two fire engineering companies to do two separate pieces of it. So we moved it all under one fire protection engineering firm. So we had to have that requoted. So that took an extra week and a half to get that done. Again, same three guys came back, same three firms came back and quoted Comprehensive Fire Protection was $11,580. SFC, who's also the town fire protection engineer, is $18,500. And Fernandez Associates came in at $8,400. So there was a significant difference on the prices, but both the architect and in that call with Fernandez Associates, he was very professional, did a multi-building in Harvard University, he's doing another one at Mass, UMass Amherst. So he knows exactly what he's doing. I'm not worried about the low price. A component of that low price is SFC would probably be much closer, maybe around the $10,000 mark, because they offered a little bit more services. They would come in and really take a look at the construction piece of the fire protection, where we really don't need that component of that quote. So to really apples to apples, SFC wasn't that bad if you took out some money. But we still, the architect was very happy with FA, Fire Engineering out of Byfield. So that's the purchase order that we have written tonight for a quote. Any questions?
I was just gonna ask, so did we decide that what they had recommended for the $8,000, that could potentially take care of services for the church?
Absolutely. So the system will be designed for a multi-building, the new fire station here, museum, library, and then the church.
And there's no extra, like, if we just did the town buildings, it would have been, say, $20,000 cistern, add the church, $30,000, or anything like that, or no?
Same, same thing. There's no real...
So there's no appreciable cost adding the church, is the bottom line?
Okay, that's good.
So how about adding the additional fire hydrants?
So the additional, sorry.
Hydrants.
Well, that is not inclusive, and it may be even worse than that, right? We may want...
Did you ask for the hydrants?
Fire hydrants.
We're gonna wanna get rid of hydrants.
Oh, fire hydrants.
There's currently two fire hydrants on that system, so I'm gonna...
According to the engineer, as soon as you put one hydrant on the system, then you need 15% more water in the system. So that's, and it doesn't matter if it's... So when they look at a system, it's not a multi-system failure, meaning this building will light on fire, the library, the church are all at once. They base it off of the highest need for the fire protection. So same thing with the hydrants, you would have 30 hydrants in the system, and they're just, their plan, what they pre-planned for is one fire hydrant being utilized that time. So it's just 15%, because if we pour water from that fire hydrant, this building still needs to be protected.
So is there...
So no fire hydrants?
Uh, so, well, there's currently two on the system, which would add 15% more water to what we need.
And so that's not the plan at this time to have those plugs in the system? And so, that's not the plan at this time to have those plugs in the system? So, in the original contract, are, are we required to have those plugs based upon the original contract that we did?
The original contract with the high school?
High school and with the church.
Between, from what I read, for the church and the high school contract was strictly between the church and the high school, meaning that, uh, basically, if, if the high school couldn't present water, then it wasn't the high school's fault, um, and the church was liable for and responsible for keeping up their part of the system. Uh, didn't say anything about a fire.
What I ask you is, by your, what would be your recommendation? Because, to be honest, I know that hydrant's been out there, since it was put in, it's never been even touched.
Both of them.
And I don't see a need for it, to be honest with you. If you're not gonna use it, why would we incur extra cost for cistern? Then you've got other, you've got to agree with what Greenwood wrote there.
I think the original, the original reason why it was done, they were giving fire protection to the two large buildings on either side, the one on church and downtown for the plaza. I think that was the, that was the intent years ago.
Yeah, so, like you said, since the system's been installed and operational, we've never pulled water off of those hydrants.
Have they been maintained at all, or?
Uh, they, they get cracked every couple of years, but. And, you know, the, the, uh, question of power from there and not having a backup generator and all that stuff from the high school, you know, we just, we've always trained, if we don't have, you know, we're not Boston, or, you know, parts back there that have pressurized hydrants, so we train our guys more so to pull it from what we have, these dry hydrants, or even straight up on, uh, just to make it more efficient.
Is there, there's still, there's not a dry hydrant at, uh, Kingston Children's Center?
Yeah.
So, there is, there is still a hydrant there?
And then there's one at Church and Chase.
Carriage Town.
Carriage Town.
So, that one is within range of both of them, actually?
Sure.
So, so even if you did eliminate the two we're speaking about, you've got a hydrant for them?
Yeah, and to be honest, I don't think the system was designed properly for those two hydrants with that cistern that was there anyways. I would challenge, if this building caught a fire, if you tried tapping that, you would overwhelm the system.
And that, that conversation did take place, and we said, hey, what would be the cost of, you know, adding two more, say, up Main Street? Fire engineer kinda went, gee.
So, I would recommend, I would recommend that we look at, the board look at what the cost would be for the congregational church to buy into the system or tie into the system.
Yeah, it's really just the tying in.
So, we can then eliminate, um, that contract that they currently have. So, before we can do that, we need to, we need to look at that contract that they currently have.
I would just recommend that, I, I would request of the board that they do pick up some of the cost, because we still have to run a pipe from the fire station to the, out here. So, they pick up some of that cost, we need the cost of that.
Well, the system has to be maintained and checked every year, right? So, I mean, there's a cost associated with that.
To be clear, that running of that pipe from the new fire station cistern to these buildings is not part of the fire station budget.
So, where is that money coming from?
I don't know.
The bond. The extra money.
So, that's, that's something we need to have a discussion on, if that's not part of the original.
That was never part of this project.
We did discuss it at, at a party.
We're going to budget season, if you can make sure you have those numbers as we proceed going forward into next year's budget, that would be appropriate for you to bring it up at that time.
Sure.
Do you have a rough estimate? Guest estimate?
I think we. Yeah.
Eighty, eighty grand. Yep.
I'd say regularly, that could come out of infrastructure for fun, right? The town building, we could do budget.
Ambience fees. We can find that out of there.
Decide.
We gotta ask the congregational church to dig deeper in our place.
The, the last call that I had from the church was, they were waiting for a final number, and they wanted to meet with the board to discuss whatever the price is gonna be. From the church.
They weren't discussing with the board?
Yeah, they have money, they have money put aside.
Conversation with FA Associates.
Sure.
And say, you know, hey, now that you've looked at the church and the museum and the town hall and the fire station, is, you know, do we need a larger pump for the church? You know, it's, it's up in the air, he doesn't know what he's.
What's driving the passion?
He off, off the, you know, he, he kinda said, your building's driving it right now. The new fire station is really driving the size of that cistern and pump. The rest of it's not gonna be heavily occupied, cause we're gonna have people there 24/7. He said, yeah, you know, the new station's probably gonna drive it, but we'll get that adder, and if we can, we'll see what the difference is.
So, that's, the church was waiting for, for a number from us?
Maybe they won't even connect if they don't let them know.
Yeah.
That's their option. I mean, you know, they, they were lucky with the school, but it doesn't mean it has to go forward.
So, I think whatever that number is, if you could let us know, and we'll.
Sure.
I'll call the gentleman that's there, we're up to the church.
That was, that's really what that PO is, is to get that number, so. We gotta. Okay. Okay.
How, how much of this would you say is for the, um, engineering on that particular building? Could you get, get us a separate cost for that?
Uh, no, I can tell you that half, so, uh, about half of that is for the cis, multi-building cistern design. It's not broken down by building. And about, we'll get 80 at 48.
So, probably a quarter, seeing there's four buildings?
Yeah.
Okay. So, a quarter of this price would be the first estimate that we would charge now, seeing there's four, four buildings tying into this, right? 25%?
It was 48, so. Yeah, 15 to 2,000 was probably the church.
So, would the board like me to go back with a price just for the engineering? Because they're one quarter of the system. They're one building out of four, they're gonna tie into this. What's the board's opinion on that?
I don't have a problem. They, they need to, because they need to approve before they go forward, and this, this will determine whether they're gonna go forward or not.
I think they are, based upon the discussion I had with the gentleman.
I'm sure that.
So, a quarter of this 8,400?
That's fine.
I, I'm not looking to give away the bang, but I just feel what they just said was, that is nothing to the system. The system's designed as it is. I'm more concerned with them paying maybe a fourth of the pipe coming up, not that, cause.
Well, it all adds up, Kevin. You gotta consider, if you're gonna consider the pipe, you're gonna consider this year.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, they said it's.
You wanna talk to everybody in the place and see if they wanna buy in?
Yeah, no, I, I know, I'm more than part of that setup. I, I, I just figured if we did the, the yearly fee and the thing.
I think this is a good start right here.
Well, and I think that should be explained to them, that this is just the initial part of this.
Yeah.
You know, and we'll have budgetary numbers following this work being completed, but we're kinda talking about numbers we don't have.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what.
This is a, this is a real number. That's a real number.
Yep.
We're gonna come look at your building, we're gonna go through your building, we're gonna see what you have in this building, to see what is needed to deliver water to this building.
Yep, I'm gonna design you a multi-building cistern fire pump.
And I think that equates to a quarter of the my own.
I think, I think that's correct.
And I would make that a number.
The church, yes, we have to pay, bring it to here, and the church would pay for the.
Just as I pointed out, if the church decides not to pay that, we're still on the hook for that price, cause that includes this building and.
Yeah.
Correct, and then, but then the church no longer becomes part of the discussion.
Right. Okay, so we've got a motion from Don.
A quarter, a quarter of the 8,400.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, further discussion? Okay. Roll call vote.
Palacio?
Yes.
Ritz?
Yes.
King.
Yes.
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 Okay. Do you have something, Rick?
Just make sure the church knows that this is a big number, it's coming down. The piping's 80,000 dollars, I think they, they order that too, so there's 25,000, 20 to 25,000 over there.
Thank you.
Couple of grand in the hearing, and then a yearly cost, 25% of the yearly cost for the inspections that have begun by outside firm, inspecting the system. Basic oil upgrade, right?
Yep.
I think we made the school go over that.
I was, I was told that, uh, Bill Seaman approached them years ago, made them aware that at some point this would be happening, and they had been putting money aside since that time, knowing that there was gonna be a cost associated.
It's fine, and this is the time to approach them and let them know what's coming down the road.
They, and they've spoken to me twice already.
Okay.
And so, I'll make that call to them, tell them the process has begun.
Yep.
And this is the first bill that needs to be paid, and welcome them to come talk to the board.
Yep.
And we can have that open discussion with what to expect, I would guess, right?
I would like to say, as Mark said, SMP is, I'd say they're, kinda their throttle is down now. Bowen's on them to get what they'll call Progress Plan Set to Bowen. All the engineering functions are working now, so the HVAC structural guys, they're all been picked, all have, uh, the initial progress plan set, so they're kinda specking out a lot of things. I think it's daily, we have calls with the architect, windows, uh, floor coverings, you know, all sorts of different, we haven't picked the specifics, obviously, but, you know, we go in with concrete, we own epoxy, go in with, you know, all sorts of types of door questions, window questions, so. Things are getting, uh. Things are moving along. And the next big event, I think, is the meeting in the, the week of August. Bowen will be here and kinda present a, a much tighter, uh, budget for the, the building cost. So, he'll have, uh, bids in on several of the, the key components of the, of the building, so that'll be good. Okay? Great. Thank you, guys.
You were there today as the chairman, uh, I saw the septic system went in for our neighbor. That, that's all completes their portion, and are they happy?
We still have to, uh, put some sand around the swimming pool and all that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, the public hearing regarding the resident parking policy and amendments to Article 1005 Parking Regulations. Don, you wanna?
Sure, so, um, I ask that this be continued to add the new regulation to where it really belonged in Article 1005, which, if you look under 1005.2, gives all the definitions that what we enforce. Um, and we enforce, um, currently under, uh, in any posted area of town property, currently we've been fining $50, because that is town property and it is posted. So, we're just amending that to add 1005.5, that the selectmen may, at their discretion, designate resident-only parking areas. And the other change was on 1005.3, uh, no person shall park a motor vehicle in the following locations, and that's under RSA 26569, which lists what's in the, the Hampshire State statutes. So, that's the amendment to RSA, I'm sorry, to Article, uh, 1005 Parking Regulations.
It's only a motion to adopt the newly amended Article 1005 Parking Regulations.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Open it to board discussion first, and open it to public comment regarding this policy. Okay? No further discussion, do a roll call vote.
Palacio?
Yes.
Ritz?
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Okay. This time, we will have our first option, our opportunity for public comment. Anything you see fit?
Anything we see fit?
Within the parameters.
Of decency?
Yeah, that's about six months. You have three minutes.
Three minutes.
It's not the.
I'll do it with a tool battery. Uh, Dave Clements, 10 St. Wilk Lane in Kingston. I am speaking as an agent tonight for my daughter and my son-in-law. 109 Route 111, Exeter Road. My questions are very simple, and I'm, I'm sure it's gonna have you a head scratcher. We've applied for two building permits from the town. One is for an ADU, and I understand because it's an unattached ADU, it's gonna be, end up going to the planning board, and I understand that. Applied three or four weeks ago, almost four weeks ago. Um, at the same time, we applied for a garage building permit, to build a garage. My question to the board, and this is the first time I've ever come to the board, I, I've lived in Kingston, I haven't lived here as long as Mr. Briggs, but I've lived here 64 years, so I'm sorry, I let that out today.
Be not.
My question is, the procedure or how long it takes to get a building permit? And I say this because after a week, the building permit was in, the, the ADU, I understand, is more complicated because it's unattached, no question there. We were told what we needed, we went out and guarded, it took months to get an engineer, we've engineered plot plans, setbacks, everything, it fits into the puzzle perfectly. The garage is a simple garage, like a few of you probably have at your house. After three, after two weeks, we get a snail mail letter mailed on Friday, can't talk to anybody until Monday now, cause you get the letter on Friday, a simple question about the square footage. It's on the print and it's on the application. Three weeks into the application process, we get a snail mail letter, now they ask for emails and phone numbers, my cell phone, I will answer at 2:00 in the morning, I'll answer a question to somebody. We get a snail mail asking the question, that the answer is on the plot plan, I wrote it there in my own handwriting. And this week, the new question is about a trailer in the yard that has my son-in-law's logo on it, name of his Regal Construction. So, he wants to talk to us via phone, whatever. I come to the building permit, I mean, the building is backed up. This is a big deal. I've been in this town a long time, I've parked mu, up to eight car. And I'm not agricultural, residential agriculture like this site is. I park tractor trailers in my yard. My neighbors had tractor trailers with the logo on them. We held this up for another week, so we could get a letter in the mail to tell, ask us to come in and talk to him about the logo on a trailer. It has nothing to do with the garage. He said, well, it could be an in-home business. No, he doesn't work in the home, he hooks up to the trailer with the tools and he goes and earns a living to pay his taxes in the town, and we would like to build. And on top of that, they, I'm not gonna let any names out of bed, but there's been a. I, I'm gonna say this, Ellie, I heard you say you're gonna get in trouble anyway you say this, the, on the button, board number, and I am very, that they are dragging feet for no good reason. I would like to know why all. And every week, we get another correspondent in snail mail that says, what's the square footage? Well, it's, it's, it's on the permit, and it's on the plot plan, and the new. Well, it's, it's on the permit, and it's on the plot plan, and the new leach field design that's been approved by the state, the state, I'll give them credit, the state approved it in one day, the town approved the leach field in one day. We can't even get the rest of the questions from the building inspector. And I would like to know from the board, I've been waiting sixty-four years to come talk to you people, what is the expected time of a building permit? I don't have many more years to move into this ADU, I'm, I'm almost done with that. What is the expected time to get a building permit? And when can you get the questions you're going to answer? Or are they going to keep drizzling in for the next six years? I mean, it's, it's, we're talking about months now.
When, when did you pull the original permit?
It's been four weeks. So, it was a simple garage, now I understand the ADU is going to be a little more complicated, and I'm ready for that.
That's a new rule that was just passed, you know, the last voting session, the last town meeting, that was, that was passed. I, I understand there was some discrepancy, I was there last week when the town planner and the building inspector met to review that, so that, I know you're not asking about that.
Asked about, they were, they met the-
No. It wasn't, I think that got all resolved. As far as the planning board being involved in a building permit, they're not, so-
With an unattached ADU, a specialized-
With a building permit, a, a planning board member would not be able to exercise undue influence on any part of that process. They would, you know, I mean, obviously, when you go before the planning-
As an unattached ADU? Sure.
But as far as your question goes, I can tell you personally, I'll follow up on this tomorrow and find out the answers for-
Now, I'm not asking for somebody to get in trouble, I just want to know what I can do to expedite. We told them, we told everybody this in the beginning, the lady downstairs is excellent, by the way, she's a nice lady. Tony?
Tori.
Tori? Very nice. It's so mad, I built a house here, I built a garage, I built other buildings, we've flipped houses, I really just want a permit to build a garage.
It's been four weeks for a building permit, is what you're saying?
No, yeah, it's been four weeks, but it's been four weeks with one question a week mailed to us. I don't understand.
And you said on the application, it asks for your cell phone and your email.
It asks for your cell phone and your, and your email. We'll answer either one on the same day, but I don't understand the system. Maybe, maybe you guys can explain to me, maybe the system is as old as, you know, Mr. Briggs.
Well, I, I do know that the building inspector does not have a computer.
But he is also a part-time building inspector.
Yep, I understand that, he told me that.
There has been quite a backlog, I'm not going to blame this on COVID.
Yep.
There has been a backlog from that, and there has been quite an explosion in building in Kingston since then, so I will say to his credit, he has been very busy working on it. But I would not sit here and tell you that it's acceptable that it takes four weeks to get a building permit, I'm not going to sit here and tell you.
So my one question is, how long does it usually take or should I take? The second question is, what does a logoed trailer, is there, is there a largesse having a logoed car or a truck in the yard? This isn't a tractor trailer, I've brought those home for years, for thirty years, with my name on it, but this is a utility trailer with hand tools in it. And this was what happened for last week. What's the trailer, what are you doing?
I, I don't know specifically what his concern is there.
We can answer that question in twenty seconds on a cell phone call. And he told me today to put it in writing, what he does. I don't know what his job has to do with this. If they don't like the trailer, give us a permit for the garage, we'll never see it yet, but it does-
I mean, unfortunately, when you come in for public comment, we don't have any time to prep or have answers.
And there's the house, it was seven days, you can't even get your permit in in seven days, you know what I mean?
As frustrated as you are, I have to say, from the zoning board perspective, I appreciate all that Robert does because-
Oh, I'm sure.
Dot the i's and cross the t's, it's important.
Well, I think you would, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I hear your frustration, and I know it's been, it's been busier than hell downstairs.
Okay, so, to put in-
I would have sexual weeks talked.
Maybe that's the whole answer. We have friends that put a building permit in for a house and a same-sized garage made out of steel. One week to the day, they had to permit and they're living in it. They built, my son-in-law built a house in Newton. The application process and the permit for a brand-new house in Newton that he already sold, almost, people almost ready to move in, that application process took four days. I'm just-
I can tell you, I don't know about in your case, but a lot of times, we all ask, they want to document it, so it's not as it was supposed to be, you know what I'm saying? They've had it documented, this is what you've rea- you've rea-
I think, Phil, we're going to rely on our chairman to follow up and check the-
Hey, that's-
Is there an ordinance against having a-
I can give you the squeaky wheel, that's your fault.
No, I understand that.
Um, no, I, I've been overseeing the inspectors' meeting, and we're in the process of reviewing the whole permitting process. So this is one of those things that we are addressing in those meetings, trying to streamline the process. So what I would like to do, the reason I'd like to meet with Robert on this specifically is find out where the holdup is.
Right.
So that it can be addressed in the process.
If there's anything we've done, I mean, we've hopefully crossed-
Yeah, we can find that out tomorrow.
On all the i's, right. Is there an ordinance against having a pickup truck or?
Commercial, commercial vehicles.
In your yard?
You're supposed to, yeah, commercial vehicles, there is, you're supposed to do a form, isn't that through the planning board?
I think it's in the sign ordinance or something like that.
Sign letters.
So there is something in order to have a commercial vehicle parked in a residential area?
Residential agriculture.
That's residential.
Single-family residential.
Is that what it is?
And it's not a commercial vehicle, it's a trailer.
Well, it's a trailer, and he hooks a truck to take his tools to the job.
So I know there's some kind of a form they fill out and they-
Single-family residential.
Now, that probably, it's less than you for that.
In your case?
All right, I'll go back to questions next year.
Hey, see you next year, you'll be a year older.
And deeper in debt.
So, yeah.
Dave, see you, have a good night.
I know, I know, I just said to you.
What's that?
No.
I'll go.
See you.
Any more? You here to comment?
I'm going to use this, so it's yours on the bridge, on the Kingston bridge.
Ah, that's coming.
Evy, Nate.
Sorry. All right. Is this lovely folder here?
Some books on it for what you need to do.
Okay.
Right, the email that we got said that there's two forms that we need to sign to authorize the bond, right? Is that correct?
One, you need two.
So we need a motion to sign acknowledging that we have reviewed tax form 8038-G. And there are two copies for that. Then we need a motion to adopt post-issuance tax compliant procedures. There are two copies of that.
Okay, I move that we authorize a signature for the form 8038-G and for post-issuance tax procedures.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, discussion. Roll call vote.
Palacio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Upstate.
Upstate, St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Okay. We have a letter here for Torneo Industries.
Letters printed on the front and back, there's two options for the letter, right? Last paragraph is the difference in the two options?
My only concern with both letters is we start off in our office and has all the selectmen listed, then the very last sentence says, "After meeting with you at that time", I think it should just say, "After meeting with Selectman Wilson", because it doesn't, you know, because we all did meet with him.
No, it's fine.
Okay, you see that, she's in the trailer, be the first paragraph.
I don't know.
Last set, which is the last.
Shouldn't the name be out there too? Well, actually, you met with the neighbor.
I met with the neighbor.
You met with the neighbor.
Yeah, I met with the neighbor.
Because it's just- The difference in the two is whether we're going to ask for any replacement trees or if we're going to-
I'd like to ask for the replacement trees, why not? I wouldn't want to do that. Is there something I don't know or I'm not aware of?
And that's what the neighbor's asking too, that some of the trees get replaced, right? Rich?
I think that's reasonable.
The neighbor basically called me and said that if we don't ask for replacement trees, it's going to take civil action against him in court, ask for replacement trees.
You know, we, we can err on the side that he took more trees than he thought he should. God knows, we have that experience many times, but I think we should ask him to, to fill in the gaps and replace the trees. It will take a little time to grow, but at least they'll be in there and they'll clearly mark the, the two-hundred-foot distance that's needed, so I, for the longer letter of the two.
I have a second, Matt.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. So, having recently experienced this phenomenon, typically what a forester will tell you, and I haven't seen the site or anything like that, but it would be to just leave the site alone rather than planting trees, the trees will come back on their own, and they'll do better than anything you plant.
Really?
Yes. So.
Well, we get a neighbor who's not happy, so I don't know about that.
I guess my comment on that would be is if they just cut the trees, that would be one thing, but I think they might have rent a dozer through there, and I'm not sure, but...
I'm sure Mr. Brezner would agree with that.
And again, there, I'll just put it out there, there was a, a specific site plan that he was to adhere to, and he violated that, so that's why that further discussion would take place. In this instance, this is not a site plan violation that took place, so-
That, that's the biggest difference in the two.
And I, I think, you know, in that instance, the, the neighbor in butter is more than welcome to take civil action to enforce those things, but I would question how much authority the town has to demand that.
To demand that be replaced?
Yes.
What, the ordinance, it's going to be a fifty-foot path, right?
Two hundred.
I'm sorry, two hundred-foot path.
What, what I would say is, the way the letter is written, we're asking him to come up with a plan and bring it to us, we're not saying you're going to plant two hundred trees. And I agree with you on that line, that the forest will grow itself, but maybe on the front line of it, he can plant and grow his trees and then leave the rest to grow on its own. And I think all we're asking by this letter is for him to come forward and say what he's going to do to do something, versus just tell him, don't do anything.
Yeah, see what his remedy is.
Yeah, I don't think he needs to go that hundred-and-fifty feet they took out, where trees have been sixteen or whatever, just a piece of rock.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
This is to go with the longer letter, right?
Yep.
With amendment says proposed, whatever his remedy is, yeah.
Yeah.
Palacio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. New business. We have another enforcement action, as requested by the Conservation Commission. I'm just going to read this so everybody's aware of it. "In a recent trail walk of the Acorn Town Forest, the Conservation Commission determined that the bridge providing access from your property crosses the boundary of the town forest. This bridge is in violation of the following town-state regulations. Bridge constitutes trespassing town property as it is situated on town-owned land, the bridge has been installed in a wetland area without a permit from the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The width of the bridge and tire tracks observed leading to it indicate that its purpose is to provide ATV access to the town forest. ATV use is prohibited in Acorn Town Forest in accordance with the Conservation Amendment rules established that Southeastland Trust Conservation is exempt." So that was Conservation's letter.
Do you think the letter for enforcement or going out and actually speaking with them about it?
Well, that would be my first question, has anyone spoken to them?
No. My, my recommendation would be, I don't mind going out and speaking with them and telling them, this is where the town stands on this, we're asking that you move that onto your own property, and these are the things you can and can't do. I mean, I've always found that going out and speaking to someone, you get more resolve.
The other issue is the ATVs, so also-
Can I just ask a stupid question? I mean, the ATV could probably be able to go over, forget about the bridge, he can still go through it if he wanted, I don't think the bridge is really impeding that, it's probably a walkway.
Well, I think that, and I didn't walk on the property, I was working with the other issue next door, there was some talk about a bridge, you know, I didn't trespass on his property, but now there's a reason to see him, so I don't know why the bridge is there anyways, because you're right, because the, the all-terrain vehicle can go anywhere there, so.
Well, the bridge is illegal, right?
Yeah, according to what Evy's telling us.
I just question it, is it, I mean, it's a walkway, it's not a, you know, a structure, I'd rather, I'd like to see some pictures of it or something.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And I, I think if we looked at it and talked to the guy and see-
See what it is.
See if he drove it.
I sent them an email, I believe.
Yeah, there was a picture, I saw it.
It was in the email?
Yeah.
That was that one, okay. But it, it was just, it was a footpath, it wasn't a-
Yeah, but it's, it's someone put a bridge over wetlands without a permit or nothing, sorry.
Here's the picture, Greg, Sydney, Evy, Nate are online, they've got the picture.
You can't do that kind of stuff, they got caught, I'm sure it's not the first time, but-
Well, would the board be in favor of Selectman Briggs going and speaking with them as a first step?
I say yes, I don't have a problem with that, if the ATV, they can't run their ATVs in there, right? So that's part of the problem, and the bridge is a problem. So I have no, no problem asking our chief to go see, give a try, and if we have to do anything else, we do the next step.
Okay, anybody else have an issue with that?
Read the letter and we can talk to them.
Okay, yeah.
Where is that off of Acorn? Where is that?
Acorn's off Ball Road.
The family question is located in 54 Ball Road.
It's actually right next to where I went to look at where the trail goes in the general shooting.
Okay. I'm going to, how long have we had Acorn?
Ball Road takes the, right, coming in, 111 side, it's right at-
Sectionist trail.
Right, to the left.
Okay, we have commission appointments for both the Conservation Commission and the Heritage Commission. I guess at this time, we have to address our policy. In the past, we've been meeting with people before we appoint them, given COVID concerns, we weren't doing that. What's the board's feeling moving forward?
I'd say we're still in COVID time, so let's appoint them in.
Well, I guess my comment would be, we'd still be way under the allowed number of people if we brought them in, they can wear a mask and they can maintain six feet.
That's true.
I mean, at this point, other than the planning board, all meetings should be public now. I mean, planning board can get more than, you know, the amount of people, but, you know, historic district, everybody should be in public meetings because they can maintain six feet, they can wear masks if they need to.
Well, we also left it up to each chair as how they want to do it.
I know, but I'm saying it's probably-
But that's a different issue. But that's a different issue than these two.
Well, I mean, I think our intent in bringing people in was to recognize volunteers, and I want to continue to do that myself.
Are there three appointments?
Uh, some, no add-ins.
Four of them are alternates, just till next March.
Alternates to the Conserv- Conservation in his flower?
Uh, this is alternate to the Heritage, so I would say Adam and Charlotte have both come in and been recognized. Jane Christie and Eileen Clifford, did they come in?
I don't think so.
Who?
Jane Christie. She's on which one, the Heritage?
These are both Heritage.
She's reappointment, I know.
I think they both are. Eileen Clifford is too.
I mean, it's a reappointment. I don't see a point in needing them to come in if they're new.
I agree.
I mean, it's hard enough to get people to serve on those committees to put them in.
Okay, so we're good with alternates? We're just going to sign these?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's one for Conservation, alternate member as well. Same thing?
They new or they...
Uh, they're new.
I'd rather to see a new person anyways.
Okay, well, two of those people were new, I thought.
I thought you said they were, they weren't. They were reappointments.
Yeah, I think Clifford's on, and so is John.
Okay.
So you want to see the new Conservation person? Is that what you're...
Okay.
Why don't we just go forward from here? If they are a new person, they need to come to us so that you know, Susan, if they said we knew, well, they don't. How does that make it simple? I do think Phil is right about recognizing new volunteers and joining committees because they are few and far between.
All right. There is a report from the town engineer regarding R3 lot 4, that's the Vine's property right at Diamond Oaks. I didn't see anything that required enforcement in there. Was that how it was presented to you?
Yeah, he had a talk to me and he said he just wanted to bring it to the board. If he wanted them to do that, it would have to come from you, I think is how he put it. So it's not exactly an enforcement, like it's a big problem. He doesn't seem to think it's bad, but the one thing he saw that he thought should be fixed is that sheer drop. I'm afraid that's dangerous.
Yes, and he says in his letter that we should have a fence and that fence needs to be maintained, and these couple of trees that need to be replaced, and the catch basin to the manhole was paved over and will need to be brought to grade for ease of access.
So would this be us or the planning board? Because this is under their site plan. So I don't know why this would come to us right off.
He presented it to me as if this is something we're going to have to select, but I can talk to him and get more details.
So when I went out and did the 911 covering, he advised me some of the things he had to do that Dennis brought to his attention. And my understanding was that the only one that he was really having an issue with, if you look at, if you go up to the property, there's a flat wall all the way around where he's moved rock, but on the top of that is a fence. So he said the fence should suffice because no one can get beyond the fence to get injured. But he had a fence at the top of it. So his issue, he understood he had to clear the manhole and the whole, the whole other issues. But the real problem the owner was having was the fence at the top based upon, you know, nobody can climb up it, and it's a safety issue. No one can get near the edge of it to fall over. So that's what he was speaking to me about.
What was that?
Uh, I went down there two weeks ago.
If I could ask, I didn't see it, but addressing this and I would ask Selectman Wilson, he's the liaison. He was brought to my attention that's posing a site plan, he was supposed to have some sort of buffer with trees, and you don't have that. You're driving down 125, you see a red garage, and I would just question, I don't have the site plan with me, but I don't know if it was supposed to be some sort of sightline buffer, but someone said when it went to the original planning board, it was supposed to have some sort of...
Which was you.
Yeah, I mean, I remember the residents came in and they were fairly upset about that, but again, I'm curious why we're dealing with this.
If you could check on that before, and I would agree, this isn't anything for us, I don't think. I think it's a site plan issue, and I would ask the planning board.
Yeah, but I'm not an expert in some of these procedures on this level, but it may be that the Board of Selectmen asked to issue a notice that they're in violation of their site plan and that these are the things they need to do to remedy. Again, I don't know, it's new for me, but there's a reason why it's here, and I think it has to do with the enforcement piece of it, that this is a problem.
Well, normally we'd get something from the chairman to say that we're asking you to enforce.
Letter of request for enforcement.
From the planning board, yeah, okay.
And we don't have that.
And the other thing with this particular one, now, he's in the middle of the CFO, and not all of the scientists have signed the CFO.
CFO?
A certificate for occupancy. So I was one of the first few out there to sign, to give it the number and get the 911 number up there, register.
That's one of the requirements in the site plan.
Right.
To sign with the address.
Okay.
But I'm saying, so the rest of them, I mean, Dennis isn't going to sign, probably Robin based upon, if that's what their thought is, that it doesn't meet, then they won't be signing these.
I will check in this and we'll talk about it in two weeks.
Just what, I'm looking for ways that we don't have to keep coming back on the same thing over and over again so that we can clear up some of this and not take so long ourselves in making decisions in a timely fashion.
Well, I thought we kind of set up the standard that we can't, we just don't randomly go send out letters. It has to be recommended from the planning board.
Okay.
Or the Conservation Commission or whoever. I mean, yeah, so, and I don't know, am I off-base here? Because it just seems like this wouldn't be something we'd be enforcing on. Yeah.
I mean, this is a prime example. It probably should come from the planning board because it's a cycling violation.
Right.
Which is more male, I kind of disagree with, that they gave it to us to enforce and we probably could have without asking the planning board for enforcement because...
He was working off of approval.
And so complained direct to us. But I think this is planning board.
Okay. Then it should go back to planning board.
All right, we've got a facilities license agreement here for Tasselberry Fairs. We did get their check, yes?
Yes, we did.
And their return certificate is in here.
It's the sample.
So my question would be, how are they going to enforce what the state is recommending?
There's a whole write-up in that. So by the social distancing, our floor plan would have a minimum of 10-foot gap every other booth, and sidewalks kept up to prevent cross-contamination. The only aisle would be one-way. We would also stake a flight taper on the perimeter of the event to create one common entrance/exit. Post-sight is to remind and encourage social distancing and hygiene, have two-hand sanitation stations. So they do address that.
They're going to enforce it?
That's what they're saying.
And they sent us a check-in. Does that include the fee for details or whatever?
That's the first fiber of it.
This, the only thing this entails is the facility's use fee as approved, done to them. So you haven't seen any of this yet?
I would recommend to the board that we may ask them to come into a meeting with the health officer, the fire chief, myself, to look at what they're really going to be doing and how they're going to enforce it.
I guess my only interpretation on that is this is for the 5th of September, so it would probably be Sunday. We should try and set up with them maybe this week, not necessarily in front of the selection, but with...
The board, I mean, I think normally not in these types of situations, but I mean, we could, I mean, for the enforcement part, if they have 3,000 people out there or 2,000 people or something, are you going to enforce it?
I thought the, there is state regulations for fairs. You're just going to basically divide everything by six to maintain it. I thought a standard procedure for them was they had to get the police chief, fire chief, and road agent to sign off on it, then it comes to us.
Yeah.
So they're behind the eight ball in that, and then I think what Briggs is asking is just add the help officer based on the COVID. But I think that's our policy, is they're going to go and get that before you, before it comes to us.
For the facilities, that form is different, but I can get them...
This is a different kind of form?
Yeah, this is that new one.
That's not good.
It's the new one. It doesn't have a sign-off for that one.
Oh, that's not good.
What new form?
The one that we use for the fall fields.
I'm not in favor of letting them come in the planes on September 5th because I think we're still in COVID country territory, and even though they set up those booths 10 feet apart, there's no way they can control the crowds. How are we going to enforce, I mean, why do they have only a third of the crowd? And they control the coming, they had to temperatures in the gate. We have no means of controlling that crowd or the size of it. This is not a non-violent demonstration of free peace here. This is free speech. This is a totally different ballgame. We cannot, we do not have the resources to enforce it. Let's put it that way. So I'm not even in favor of signing the application. And certainly not without signing off on the police fire. That's got to be added to the form.
Yeah, I don't know why that isn't there.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at this form and I've never seen this one before.
That's when we pulled out, we copied Exeter because you were looking for something for the fall field.
Well, we copied, it was just a destructure, not changing the form. I thought that's all we did.
This is what we use for the Vintage Bizarre people? Because I thought they had one that was...
I'll have to go back and look, because last year we had the same form. I had that in my computer and I think that was, I'll check.
Yeah, I thought everything that they... How can I make a decision if I don't know what the road agent, police chief, fire chief...
And normally they would hear...
And they're in corner.
Right. Well, that's why he said...
Well, the fire department canceled their thing and she for that reason. Kingston Days was canceled.
They canceled all the events.
So my only concern would be, without checking with our insurance carrier, Primex, if we're our own people, our own groups are canceling to make the town safe and everyone else safe, but yet we're going to open it up to outsiders to come in, that may be an issue, may be a liability issue for us if we sign off on it.
It is a liability, chief. It's not even a question about it. And don't even waste time talking to Primex. This is, this is way...
Well, I think we should talk to Primex.
Well, okay, that's not my point. My point is, it's obvious, to me, it's an obvious issue, a liability issue.
I mean, our own groups, our own town groups are canceling based upon the safety of the public.
Ellen mentioned today too, she said she goes to these things and she said that they're all canceled this year. She was surprised they were even...
Yeah. I mean, I can make that call to Primex if you'd like tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that saves any forward momentum on this. If the insurance company is like, "Absolutely not," then it's over.
Can I ask you something? Andy, when did you get that application?
We spoke about this last meeting.
We did talk about it.
You see that you copied, I think it was you, one of you from Exeter, that you wanted to cover us for the use of the fields and going forward to use this form. It should have an attachment with a signature PFC on that, because I've done that for some of the others.
No, but I'm saying, if they're trying to do this September 5th, they didn't allow themselves to entirely.
No, it's supposed to be a lawsuit. It's supposed to be a lawsuit, so that's why I brought it to you guys' last meeting to at least see if you'd entertain the idea. And you said, "Okay, we'll look at the application." And that's what she's done, so just need to let it know.
You want a motion to deny it?
Why don't we do our due diligence first before we... Oh, I'm sorry. Feel free to make a motion at your leisure. I shouldn't cut you off there. If you want to do that, that's fine.
If you want to wait until he checks, I just want to let them know how we feel. All right, I'm going to move that we deny their application request to hold the event for Tasselberry Fairs on September 5th in Kingston.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay.
I would just say, it's just, you know, everything else is canceled and rather waste time and effort and then thinking they're still going to be on you some, maybe they can find another spot or something else. It's quite better to let them know we're not interested at this time. Thank you, buddy.
I do think it's going to be inexpedient to legislate and maintain. There's not so much with the booths. I think they can control how they space them out and all that, but we cannot control the crowds.
I think you open up our own groups who are canceling based upon the safety of sun safety to hold these events. So to let someone draw a large crowd in, I'm thinking we're opening up Pandora's box here, too.
I think most of those decisions were made at the early onset of this thing, but I absolutely see your point, and again, looking at the September 5th and it's now August 3rd, it's under a month, and that's, we've had this discussion before, you know, when the Vintage Bizarre came here, that was months and months before the event, so... All right. Any other discussion?
Want to vote?
Please.
Alasia?
Yes, because we deny the request on...
Coons? Is that her word? Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, so...
And if I could just add, I would just ask our administrator to go back and add that signature and let them know it can't come to the board until they at least box those.
All right. All that's in correspondence. So next we have committee liaison, or where's the info from the singles?
Oh, you should have copied in your packet. Put it back as it just came in.
That was for the bulk cleaning?
Yep.
This one.
Okay, this is a request to put a CD3 wayside solar waterless cleaning system to place this system at the parking area across the street from the town and state ramps. Is there a state ramp?
Yeah, the town ramp is really what it is.
Yeah, to the left of the town.
The system would be in the area for one week, August 27th to September 3rd. There is no cost and New Hampshire Lakes is fully insured.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. You're none.
Alasia?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Does anyone know why Miore was here, but did she left?
I don't know. She talked with Rich, so I don't know her, but...
Okay, committee liaison reports.
I'll start with the history book. I've been involved in two of their meetings now. They're doing them Zoom. They basically have 12 members that have interviewed about 100 people for the history book. I read the first chapter and it's amazing. I mean, it's just, it took bits and pieces that I've heard over the 35 years I've been here and put it all kind of in order of how it really happens and everything. Two concerns they have is that the boat's running very long and they're now trying to figure out a way to condense it by, you know, eliminating or compacting some of the articles. And the other one is Dundee, and basically they're still looking for any donations, you know, anybody wants to make. They have different levels of donations. I think that sheet... make, they have different levels of donations. I think that sheet is on the town website. And they'd really encourage a little help on that so they can keep the price of the overall book down. They plan on having it ready for Christmas. Right now their scheduled date is to have it ready December 5th, I believe. But they want to have it ready for Christmas and encourage it as a Christmas present. But I was very impressed with the amount of work going into it and the, I like to say the first chapter. I've got the second chapter and I haven't read it yet.
Would it be possible to put that on the news, like the more prominent section of the web, the Kingston page to?
What do you want it to say?
I'm sure Bob can give you anything you need on it.
Okay, I'll talk to Bob.
Planning board is pretty much caught up with being behind from all the lack of meetings. In fact, there's a meeting tomorrow night that's been canceled, so due to lack of anything on it, the next meeting is very busy. Will probably be a very late meeting. The only other comment is kind of an overall that I sent a while ago, that I feel it's time for these smaller groups to have in-person meetings. I had a couple of calls about the historical.
Historic district commission.
Yeah, that commission, that they are having a Zoom meeting and a couple of members don't have computers and cannot participate. And according to the article they're supposed to read, if members cannot participate, they're not supposed to have them Zoom. They either have to make a way to.
To accommodate.
To accommodate or do it in person.
Yes.
I don't know any reason like the Heritage Commission wants a Zoom meeting set up and there's, you know, 10 people, maybe 12 that could spread out, you know, in a room. That's all it's there. There's never any, you know, attendance for those meetings. And I think it's time to start thinking about having people meet in person instead of giving the chairman the option. Especially, I mean, like I said, planning board's another exception because planning board gets a lot more crowd. And I mean, Peter's here, but I feel like planning board meetings are going as well and better on Zoom because it's, it's literally laying people out and making them speak in order and everything else.
Well, as, as a representative of the historic district commission, I spoke to one of those individuals and one of the members that, they have a computer, but it's not as up to date. But they can also borrow computers at the library. They do lend out computers, like you would a book. And they, I'm sure, knowing the folks at the library, they could set it up if so wanted. But that individual wasn't comfortable with that and that's okay. That's his or her choice. I, I don't have a problem with it. But not everyone is ready to go forward like there's nothing going on. And so I, I like.
I'm not saying go, nothing going on.
I, I know that. I, I agree with you. I agree with you. And it would be nice if everyone was ready, but not everyone is really ready to be 100% live. And I think we should be a little more patient. That's all. That's all I'm saying. Most committees are meeting and everyone was comfortable with that. I know from my zoning, for example, everyone was comfortable with that.
I think the guidelines that we just put out there for meetings were borderline suggestions and then each individual board could make their decision about if they wanted to be stricter, so.
We're going to be in COVID country for a while. We're not going anywhere fast.
I agree.
But.
I, I know like the trustees, the trust fund are looking at doing like Zoom meeting and then once a quarter, at least meeting in person, signing and getting, you know, reps that have to come in and talk about certain investments and stuff like that. They've done that, so.
I'm just one opinion.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a tricky topic.
It is a tricky topic, but that's really, the HTC is the only one, as far as I'm aware of, that's been an issue. Is that correct?
Heritage just decided to go Zoom. You know, they have a meeting set up, I think in two weeks that they want to go Zoom.
I, I think probably the guidance should be that if someone is doing a Zoom based meeting, then they need to put the effort in to make sure that all members have access to the meeting. Adam, you know.
I mean, can we, is there a compromise where the person who doesn't have a computer can go to one of those people's houses that they feel comfortable with and join the Zoom meeting? You could, like, I mean, over, beyond the county, we double up on some of the offices so that people, you know, the nurse home director and director of nursing was in one office.
My feeling on that is that some of the committees, the majority of not all the people are in high risk. If they don't feel comfortable in a meeting like this, six feet apart, they're not going to feel comfortable with somebody coming into their house.
That's true.
No, I just think it's almost comfortable with the people. It'd be around them. They wouldn't need to be good about it.
I think what they ended up with was to give them all the paperwork of the comment at time and maybe all to tell them what happened.
I mean, it comes down to voting and everything else that they have to be able to vote.
I don't disagree with that piece of it. I, and, but I, as I said, I've talked to one of the minutes and you can always borrow a computer and I know the library would set it, if it doesn't already have Zoom, they would set it up so that it wouldn't be, but the person was uncomfortable doing it. I, I, for some that are not used to working on computers, I can understand that. I'm not, I'm not saying that in a critical way at all, but there was another option and it wasn't good for them, so. For one individual. I know there are two. The other person has no computer. This one just has limited acts, limited capacity.
And just my last comment is I will not be here the week of August 31st. So if, if the planning board, if they have a meeting that Tuesday, we'll need somebody else there if we want to be represented, which would be September 1st.
Are they having a meeting? Are they having a meeting?
I don't know yet. I'll find out.
Well, if they do, just let me know. I'll follow up for you.
Nothing on budget committee yet. They're meeting later on this month. And fire department, we're waiting on Block 5 to come in and just do a quick consult, looking at evaluating all the town buildings for IT. And then the only other thing I just want to at least acknowledge is it would have been Kingston Days, I believe, last weekend?
It would be this weekend.
Is it this weekend coming? It's just a Saturday, but I understand why they did it. And it just, you know, it was something for the town to look forward to and hopefully it'll be back vivacious and better than ever next year.
Board asked me to look into the Eagle Skull project. I did so. I spoke with the attorney, Mike Ricker, from Primex. He put me in touch with Nicole Armiganian and she sent me the necessary information, which is that we have the Boy Scouts of America, give us a copy of their policy and name us as an insured. And there was a couple of other things that they needed to do as well. So I've spoken with the parties that are doing it. They have all the necessary information. I think Susan, you spoke to him as well?
Yeah, he copied his, all of his information and I've got it in a file here.
Okay. So based upon that, once we get all that information, Primex recommended, so if someone got injured there, it was going to be on the Boy Scouts of America, their policy and we're named as an insured. The other thing I have is a personal issue.
We have a meeting set up with Mr. Chinberg for August 20th. I got the application from Debbie that had to be tweaked a little bit and forwarded that to him, but we're set to meet on the 20th here at the town hall in the morning of the, at 11:00 AM with our group, representing the town is Glenn Greenwood, Glenn Copeland, Susan Prescott from the HTC and myself representing this board. And we're going to hopefully get a preview of their plan and see what they need for relief in any way from the town, so that's coming up on the 20th. Zoning board, I've been working on with Ellen's help and Susan's updating the application process. We've had some concerns expressed, so we're trying to have more of a direction to know how to fill out the form, what we're looking for, what they need for approvals. We're kind of stealing from our neighbors, so to speak, and not reinventing the will, but taking advantage of some of the other forms like for Blasto and Hampstead and kind of consolidating a way that would be helpful to us. There is no August meeting, but there are two hearings coming up in September. It won't apply to the new fee, but when we get a full draft, I'll, I'll send a copy to everyone to review accordingly. And the only other thing I have is it, it would, we know it's budget time and I would like to recommend, as Rich had, St. Hillary had talked to me, that we should set up a meeting with our department heads and, and discuss how we, what we want to go forward with our budget increase for next year, kind of do some planning. I had a where we want to go, how we want to grow the budget, look at even personnel in terms of, is it time to start really talking about a town manager? I think it is. Is it time to start talking about a code enforcement officer? I think it is. And that, we may need to reshuffle other positions. I don't know, but we have so much happening in the town and potential for growth over the next couple of years. I think we need to look ahead to where we can be proactive instead of being reactive. I'm just throwing it out for your consideration and thought and I'm sure we'll talk some more about it going down the road, but I think we're in for some changes and we need to be better prepared to deal with that kind of growth.
The August 20th meeting, that's a public meeting?
Excuse me?
The August 20th meeting, it's a public meeting.
I wouldn't say so, no. I mean, it's not like it's, it's not a board meeting.
No, but I was just wondering if it's an open meeting for anyone or whatever, but.
If you want an invitation, just say so, but I, I, I want, we have to flush out what's going on. I mean, I don't want to make you uncomfortable. Don't want you to be there.
No, that's fine. That's why I was just asking.
I, I don't see it as open to the public at this point, but.
Yeah.
I'm not saying no, don't come either, because we're going to be here. It's not going to be a secret. But I don't know if anything, whether that would, I don't know.
And then back to your other point, once I meet with the budget committee, we have that scheduled set up. I'll talk to all the different department heads and see about who would need time to make up this select meeting.
I think we want to leave the parade on that, not necessarily the budget committee.
Well, we want them to submit this, but I just want to see what your timeline is when they have to be submitted to them so we can go.
Okay, okay. So that's it for me at this point.
Hey Bob, one other thing. We spoke about them wanting a, the organization. Harley Davidson, it was Lee Harley or Seaco Starly?
Seaco Starly, the Saddle 400 riders.
Yep.
It's gone to Lee, to the Department, and that was emailed to me. So I'm not sure if you guys have anything to do with it, but it's there.
So unless this, the board feels or sees differently, I will look at it like regular. They go there and they ride there, they leave there. We did that last year. That was a thing I brought to the board a couple of weeks ago and the gentleman, I think he's the chief of.
Well, then council say unless there's something glaring or different from last year, then.
So if the board has no issue, I'll pass it on to, to fire like we normally would.
No public for comment. So the 13th annual Kingston Fall Classic Hydroplane Race has been canceled. Sorry to say. There is an elderly exemption application and a veteran's credit application that is going around right now and is available for signature. We did receive a letter of complaint, RE Saddleup Saloon, for their outdoor music that is not allowed in their site plan. It's one of many complaints we've gotten about that and it is being addressed slowly. And we got an invoice from DES. I thought our state representation was addressing this.
Well, I will tell you, I don't know if anyone else caught it, but last week, the governor did sign that now the FFA has the strictest FFOA standards in the world.
In the world?
In the world.
Of course it's, why shouldn't it?
Most of the world is at 100 parts per trillion. We can ensure it's 70 parts per trillion. It lowered it to, is it 11 or 13, whatever it is.
Who cares?
You know, so that is going to have a direct impact on us. It was recommended through the legislation. It was part of a omnibus bill that was thought it might be vetoed, but the governor signed it.
Without any public hearing whatsoever.
Correct. So I don't know, it's still something, it's still something that hurts about it, but the governor signed it. So we are at that low standard.
We have 100, we have 11.
Yep. Stricter than California, stricter than Finland, any other country.
Stricter than California?
Yep. Anyways, so yeah, so I don't know, we're going to have to talk about that because that's going to come down the pipe again because the temporary solution was providing water to those residents. That was only a temporary solution.
But that's still being arbitrated in the courts, correct?
I believe it is. That's a question for, maybe we'll have to talk to Sam Boyhead. I think we might want to get them involved again and see what does this mean to us?
They sent an email or was that Dave Alwin?
It was Dave Alwin. He was recommending, I didn't think we were going to contract with him. We were going to go help the bid or something and see, but I think we need to talk to Sam Boyhead. Dave Alwin did send that. That was a recommendation. I think we're paying Sam Boyhead to make those determinations for us.
I'd recommend that we get him on Zoom at our next meeting, at a legal.
Sam Boyhead?
Sam Boyhead. That would be my recommendation so we can have that discussion.
Yep.
To see what direction we need to move in.
And I think health officers should be involved in that.
Yes.
Okay.
I was pretty surprised with that signing of that.
I'm surprised at that too. I mean, that's pretty ridiculous.
That was pretty disappointing.
Yeah.
Especially without a hearing.
One hearing, not one outside voice other than the geniuses at EBS.
Is this one of those unfounded mandates?
I don't know what else you would call it.
I don't know either.
So additionally, or lastly, we have the minutes.
You approve of the minutes in our packets, public and private, or public and doing public?
Second, third, the line, money, got a motion, second, discussion.
Who is the second?
Dawn. All is in favor?
Yep.
Anyone?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain. Okay. Okay, I have one item to discuss on public is, is. Dawn, you have one?
Yes, sir, one. Okay.
Both personnel or?
Uh, one legal, one's personnel.
One legal, one personnel.
I move that we go into the appropriate IRS stays for legal personnel issue.
Second.
In non-public.
Okay, that will conclude the televised portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you for joining us.
My roll call voted that, Susan?
Sure.